Good evening, we'll get started in just a few minutes here as people start to join. Well, good evening. I think I'll go ahead and get started with some housekeeping remarks so that we can go ahead and get on with the content of our meeting after that. So my name is Ian McMillan. I am an Assistant Deputy Executive Officer with the South Coast AQMD. And I thank you all for participating this evening in our remote regional hearing on the 2022 Air Quality Management Plan, also called the AQMP. Tonight is the second in a series of meetings we will be having on this topic. The content in all these meetings is nearly identical, but we are focusing on specific communities and counties for each of these meetings. So for example, tonight's meeting is focused on San Bernardino County. We will do our best to facilitate a smooth meeting with public participation. We have two formats for participation, the Zoom web application as well as teleconference. Before we begin, I want to review some guidelines and general instructions for this meeting. We ask you please to silence your other communication devices such as your cell or desk phone, and this will ensure that we're not hearing any feedback or causing interruption during the meeting. This meeting is not being translated into Spanish. However, Spanish versions of the slides and agenda are available on our website at www.aqmd.gov/2022AQMP. In addition, in one week at the same time, we are, we will have a regional hearing that will include live Spanish interpretation. All participants on Zoom except for panelists will be placed on mute by the host. You will not be able to mute or unmute your line manually. At the end of the meeting, we will open it up for public comment. Speakers may be limited to a total of three minutes or less for public comments. A countdown timer will be displayed on the screen for each public comment. For those on Zoom, if you would like to make public comment on the Zoom screen, please click on the raise hand button. For those calling in by phone, you can dial star nine to signal that you would like to comment. Your name or part of your phone number will be called when it is your turn to comment and the host will unmute your line automatically. Please note that you can hang up or leave the Zoom meeting at any time. We do ask, of course, that you please adhere to the speaker time limit and treat others with courtesy, civility, and respect. Failure to do so can result in your mic being muted or you being dropped from the meeting. Lastly, please be aware that this video conference meeting is being recorded. By participating in this meeting hosted by South Coast AQMD, you agree to authorize recording of audio and visual content presented during the live event and consent to subsequent use of the recording in the public domain by South Coast AQMD. For any board members or their assistants who would like to be brought over to the panel, please raise your hands so that staff can move you over. Okay, so I think that is all of our official housekeeping remarks. Now we get to get on to the show itself. So I did mention my name first. I'd like to go through some staff introductions and then we'll get on to the actual content of the meeting. So I'm gonna ask people as I see them here on my screen to introduce themselves. So Sangme, can you introduce yourself?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Sangme Li. I'm a planning and rules manager working on AQMP. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Kevin?
Good evening. My name is Kevin Ni. I'm the Sequel Air Quality Specialist.
Great. Barbara?
Good evening. My name is Barbara Baird. I'm the Chief Deputy Counsel in the Legal Division at South Coast AQMD.
And Elaine?
Good evening. My name is Elaine Shan. I'm planning and rules manager as well and working on our draft socioeconomic report for 2022 AQMP.
Great, and also want to introduce one of our colleagues over at CARB, Sylvia?
Hello, my name is Sylvia Van Der Speck and I'm Chief of the Air Quality Planning Board at the California Air Resources Board, and I oversee the SIP planning and the state strategy development.
Great, thanks so much. So we have a lot of content to get through this evening, so let's just go ahead and dive in. So I think the first one we have is going to, first presentation is going to be from Sangme. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ian. So this is the first presentation about overview of 2022 Air Quality Management Plan. Next slide, please. So this event is regional public hearings for the AQMP. As listed here, we have five meetings scheduled and this meeting is number two. And then we will have three more as listed in this slide. And probably are encouraged to participate at any meetings and more than one meetings as it suits to your time and effort, interest. Next slide. So brief outline outline of my presentation is we'll start to background of ozone air quality and discuss the emissions inventory and the need for NOx emission reductions, South Coast AQMD's control strategy, and CARB's control strategy, which will be a separate presentation item by Sylvia. And then we touch base on public process and next step. Next, next slide. So we'll start to who we are. We, South Coast AQMD, is the largest air district in the United States. We oversee the South Coast Air Basin and Coachella Valley. Our primary responsibility is pursuing emission reductions primarily from stationary resources. We also responsible to develop a clean air plan such as AQMP. Next slide. So this specific meeting is regarding 2022 AQMP. AQMP is in general a blueprint to improve air quality and achieve federal air quality standards in the South Coast Air Basin and Coachella Valley. While US EPA has established ambient air quality standard, they also revise the air quality standard periodically. The latest one was in 2015 when they tightened ozone air quality standard to 70 ppb. That triggered to need to develop an AQMP to address the control strategy to meet the 70 ppb standard by 2037. All the supporting documents are available on our website of which addresses given right here. Next slide. These two pictures demonstrate the great stride we have made to improve air quality in the past half of a century. However, unfortunately, we still have the worst ozone air quality in the nation and then we are among the worst in fine particulate matters. Next slide. So graphically demonstrating how much progress we have made, this blue lines are ozone values in South Coast Air Basin and red is ozone values in Coachella Valley, the progress made over the last approximately three decades. While it is evident there has been great improvement, still we are above federal air quality standard, which are depicted in black broken line. There are three eight hour ozone standard and the lowest one is the one is addressed in this AQMP. Next slide. So we are focused on ozone air quality because there is adverse health effects associated with ozone pollution. Primarily that is irritating respiratory tracks. For example, it enhances coughing, sore throat. It also increases susceptibility to infection. It aggravate emphysema, chronic bronchitis, and also it increases the asthma attack frequency. In addition to that, some of the pollutants that form ozone in the atmosphere also contributes to formation of fine particulate matters. And this fine particulate matters called the PM 2.5 because premature death. Next slide. Since we established that the ozone air quality is the one that needs to be improved in South Coast Air Basin and Coachella Valley, then the next question is how do we improve ozone air quality? The answer turns out to be the reducing emissions of nitrogen oxide or NOx. NOx is formed during combustion process from fossil fuels. And the NOx emission in the South Coast Air Basin is provided in the bar chart in the right. So the first orange bar is the total NOx emissions in 2018 that represent more or less current condition. Second bar is 2037 business as usual condition. So under business as usual condition, NOx emissions are expected to decrease due to ongoing implementation of the regulations. However, this business as usual condition is not sufficient to meet the 70 ppb. And this 2022 AQMP indicate that 60 ton per day of NOx emission is the maximum amount that we can accommodate while meeting the standard. This is 60 ton level is 83% reduction from current days and 67 ton percent reduction from future business as usual condition. Next slide. Then the next question is where the NOx emissions coming from? This pie chart here demonstrate NOx emissions for 2018 in the left and 2037 in the right. Majority of NOx emissions in the South Coast Basin coming from mobile sources. And especially when it comes to future inventory, it is noticeable that the yellow portion marked as off-road mobile sources, it increases its presence. This off-road mobile source includes the categories like ships, airplanes, locomotives, construction and industrial equipments, or even lawn and garden equipments. Next slide. So this leads to the next question, who has the responsibility or authority to reduce emissions from certain sectors? In the previous slides, we established off-road categories increasing in the future year. And majority of them are actually belong to federal authority. Here the bar chart to categorize emissions into two groups, one federal, the emissions subject to federal authority in yellow, and the rest belong to local and state authorities. It is evident here, the amount of emissions belong to federal authority will exceed the maximum amount of NOx emissions we can accommodate while meeting the 70 ppb standard. So this illustrate it is critical to have federal governments and federal agencies to do their share of emission reductions to meet the standard. Next slide. And this bar chart also demonstrate how the strategy, how we plan to meet the 70 ppb and emission reductions coming from control measures committed by South Coast AQMD represented in blue. And also the emission reductions that committed by California Resources Board on various sources. It also includes some portions unnecessary that for federal government to take an action as well. And with those the reductions, we could reach the 60 tons per day level, in other words, the 70 ppb standard level. Next slide. This amount of reductions needed for attainment is substantial, significant. And that level of reduction is unlikely can be reached through traditional approaches. Traditional approach meaning that the seeking for emission reductions from tailpipe will exhaust the stacks by using cleaner engines, cleaner viewers, or applying, implementing control technologies. However, this 70 ppb standard requires innovative approaches that relying on zero emission or advanced technology, whatever feasible. Next slide. So South Coast AQMD developed the control measures that apply for stationary and aerial source or aerial sources, which are NOx control measures. And then we also seeking for co-benefits from greenhouse gas reduction policies. And we also laid out the strategic VOC measures and other measures. Next slide. This slide demonstrate South Coast AQMD's stationary and aerial source NOx control measures. We grouped them into residential combustion, commercial combustion, and large industrial combustion categories. Starting from the last one, large combustion category, this is more or less a traditional air pollution control approaches that seeking for emission reductions from large boilers, process heaters, refineries, etc. This AQMP also focused on emission reductions from residential and commercial sectors as well. Since this becomes a substantial source of emissions in the future years, and that includes emission applying zero emission or advanced combustion technologies for space heating, water heating, cooking, and others. Next slide. This AQMP also laid out limited mobile source strategies that focus on the facility-based mobile source measures, or sometimes this is also referred referred as indirect source rule, targeting airports, marine ports, radars, and warehouses. We also laid out strategies to pursue emission reductions from the categories that expect to grow in the future. However, by applying certain policies such as clean construction and then pursues emission reductions. We also relying on incentive programs and also partnership with international and national agencies. Next slide. Public input and participation are critical to develop AQMP. And this slide laid out various venues of how we pursue the public participation during the development process. We also pursue the close collaboration with our sister agencies such as CARB, PUC, CC, and the federal agencies. Next step. So the AQMP had multiple, the period of a public comment period, first dropped AQMP was released in early May. We solicited comments, public comments, and accepted the public comments till July 22. We, so far, we received 80 comment letters. And then we incorporated these public comments and revised AQMP. That revised AQMP was released in early September. Currently, we are soliciting public feedback on this revised AQMP. And also, we, there are SEQA process associated with the AQMP and the socioeconomic analysis process. These two items will be further discussed and present presented in later, later of this meeting. Next slide. So regarding this public comments received on publicly dropped AQMP, there are a couple of areas that was, that were emphasized by public letters. Those are general approach for the AQMP and the need for the federal actions and engagement of federal agencies to do their share and also concerns on black box measures. Next slide. There were also concerns about implementing zero emission technologies in residential and commercial buildings, also the cost associated with them, and then infrastructure to support Z technology in various sectors, and also concerns about equity on Z technology. The step developed responses to all the comments we have received and then we compiled a volume called responses to comments. And that the volume or report is available on our AQMP website as well. Next slide. So health effect analysis is required by Health and California Health and Safety Code and Appendix One of an AQMP addresses health effects associated with PM and ozone. South Coast AQMD formed advisory council to discuss the health effects. So far, there have been two meetings. And currently, the health effect analysis report is under revision per the council's comments. Next slide. We also developed the multiple policy briefing papers to assist the development of AQMP. And they are as shown in this graph and all these documents again available at the AQMP website. Next slide. This once more present the AQMP website address that public can access all the supporting documents. Next slide. There are multiple ways public can participate and submit their comments. They are internet submitter form, email, and then actual the mail or even telephone. And then publics are encouraged to provide your comments by October 18. Next slide. So next stepwise, so as mentioned, currently, public comment period is open. And then we will develop the draft finally AQMP that reflect the comments from the public and will be released late November. South Coast AQMD governing board will consider the adoption of the AQMP in December, on December 2, followed by CARB's public hearing early next year and subsequently submit to EPA early next year. Next slide. We encourage you to sign up to e-newsletter so you can receive the development and update on AQMP. This conclude my presentation and thank you for your attention.
Great, thank you so much Sangme. I know it's a lot of material to go through, but we're just getting started. We have some other presentations we'd like to get through today. So we're very happy to have Sylvia here to speak about the state strategy. We will have opportunity for public comment. We did want to get through all the presentations first, so let's go ahead and just move right into the next one. And so go ahead and take it away Sylvia.
Thank you, Ian. So again, my name is Sylvia Van Der Speck and I'm with the California Air Resources Board. I'm gonna provide you today with the details regarding CARB's measure and emission reduction commitment that's included in the 22 AQMP. Next slide. So before I focus on the South Coast, I just want to highlight quickly, you know, that the 70 ppb ozone standard is a challenge across the state of California. When EPA revised it back in 2015, 19 areas in California became non-attainment for the standard with attainment deadlines between 2020 and 2037. Currently, there are 10 areas that need to develop a SIP, including, you know, the most challenging areas in the country, which are the only extreme areas in the country, which are the San Joaquin Valley, South Coast, and also the Coachella Valley. What's a little bit different with this lower standard is that it is a challenge to meet and there's significant emission reduction that are required and so including the South Coast, in total, seven areas need emission reduction commitments from the mobile source sector. Next slide, please. So last month, the CARB board approved the state measure commitments in the 2022 state SIP strategy. The strategy was developed, you know, through a robust public process and includes an unprecedented variety of new state measures to reduce emissions using all mechanisms available. This strategy identifies what is needed to protect public health and meet air quality standards across the state and will drive this pace and scale of CARB's rulemakings through the end of this decade. So specific to South Coast, the strategy also identifies the action the federal government needs to take to reduce emissions under their control. Next slide. So the figure here identifies a list of measures that CARB will pursue this decade. Some of these have been already adopted, such as the Clean Miles Standard. Many are in the middle of their regulatory process. If you look at the list, there's two regulations targeting trucks. The Advanced Clean Fleet Rule, which the CARB will hear at first hearing on it this month, and the Zero Emission Truck Measure. We're also proposing new, new standards for motorcycles. And CARB will be pursuing a suite of off-road measures, including a new off-road tier five standard, zero emission requirements, and then also regulations on sources that operate in the ports. CARB's in-use locomotive measure is innovative and will provide significant emission reductions in the South Coast. CARB is also ratcheting down our consumer products program. And we're also developing a zero emission standard for space and water heater and working very closely with the district on this measure. Next slide, please. Can you click through all of them, please? Thank you. So what this chart shows is our approved measure schedule. So when we develop an emission reduction commitment for the, for a SIP and we submit it to EPA, there's two elements of it. There's approval of the measures and the schedule. And so what you're seeing in front of you is the approve, our board approved schedule for the measures that were, that are in the SIP. And so we need to submit this schedule to EPA along with it. The gold stars are when the board is supposed to take action. And then the darker blue boxes are when implementation came in. And so that list of measures and this approved schedule is what the board adopted last month. Next slide. You know, as you're well aware and Sangme mentioned, you know, emission reductions from our federal partners are needed. While EPA is in the process of developing a low NOx truck standard, CARB also thinks that it's feasible for EPA to include some zero emission requirements. For off-road, we think it's appropriate for them to have a tier five emission standard and requiring zero emission vehicles, sorry, zero emission where possible. We continue to push on EPA to adopt a more stringent locomotive standard and address locomotive remanufacturing. For OGVs, we think there are opportunities for lower standard and cleaner fuels. And for aviation, we also see there are opportunities for reductions from these sectors. While when EPA acts on this SIP, they will identify them as black box measures. They're a little bit different than the black box measures in the past. For one thing, in our measure writers, we clearly identify the actions and the timings of things that EPA needs to take in order to make these come to fruition. Next slide, please. So this is actually what CARB will be adopting as part of the state SIP strategy and the South Coast AQMP in January. As Sangme mentioned, the start, the strategy really focuses on NOx reductions. In total, CARB's commitment includes over 89 tons per day of NOx reductions and almost 14 tons per day of VOC reductions. Of the 89 tons per day of NOx, 38 of them are coming from CARB-specific measures and the remaining will be considered delegated to things that we think the federal government can do. While Sangme did mention that NOx is a strategy, these VOC reductions that are included in here will provide some near-term benefits and air quality improvements in the interim. I also want to highlight that in addition to these strategies, CARB's ongoing emission reduction program provides about 167 tons of per day of, you know, NOx reductions. And so the existing program that's being implemented is significant. About, you know, of the 51 tons that we've assigned to the federal forces, the significant portion of those reductions are coming from OGV and aircraft. And again, in January, the CARB board will be adopting this aggregate emission reduction commitment as part of the AQMP. Next slide, please. So what are the next steps? Click CARB, can you, yeah, thank you. CARB will approve the South Coast aggregate commitment that's in the state strategy along with the district 2022 AQMP next January, and then we will submit it to EPA. CARB staff will continue to develop the measures in the list and the previous slide and take them to the CARB board according to their schedule. And then begin implementation to provide emission reductions in the South Coast region and the rest of the state. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much Sylvia. So I think what you're hearing is that the Air Quality Management Plan includes a lot of different components. You're seeing that in the meeting tonight. So the AQMP includes the state SIP strategy. The next two presentations we're going to hear are analyses of the Air Quality Management Plan. So we'll talk about SEQA and then we'll talk about socioeconomic. The air quality management plan. So we'll talk about SEQA and then we'll talk about socioeconomic effects after uh after that. Uh, but so first I'd like to tee up uh the SEQA discussion. So Kevin, go ahead and take us away here.
All right, thank you Ian. Uh, yes, so my name is Kevin and I will be giving a brief overview of the draft program environmental impact report. Prepare for the twenty-twenty-two AQMP. Next slide please. So the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA for short, was a state law adopted in nineteen seventy. Um, it is primarily an information disclosure document, both for decision makers and the public. To lay out the potential significant environmental impacts of a proposed project. And to list feasible alternatives and mitigation measures. Next slide please. So the twenty-twenty-two AQMP is subject to SEQA and because it encompasses the actions that the South Coast AQMD will undertake in the next four years. Um, it is evaluated under a program EIR, meaning that it's an overarching analysis and the rules, regulations, plans, and other projects which will um. Be individually further analyzed um in the future. Next slide please. So we already completed the notice of preparation of an initial study. Uh, which is the dark blue arrow and box on the left and we're currently in the gold area, which is the draft program EIR. Now, South Coast AQMD released this document and it includes a more in-depth analysis of the environmental topics. Determined in the NOPIS phase to be potentially significant. And it also includes a response to all comments we received during the NOPIS. Once the public comment period ends on November first, we'll work on the final program EIR. And we'll make sure to address any comments from the draft program EIR, in addition to showing any updates to the analysis. Lastly, the governing board will be tasked with certifying the final program EIR, which is the the white area on the right. Next slide please. So our draft program EIR follows a very traditional structure with a very short and sweet executive summary in chapter one, followed by a full-length discussion. In chapters two through five. So for for those who want an in-depth analysis, for example, on air quality. I would direct you first to read the executive summary in chapter one and then jump to chapter four, you know, to get more details. Next slide please. So as I mentioned previously, the draft program EIR goes into more depth on what the NOPIS um covered very briefly. And so specifically, if I could direct your attention to the the bottom left. Um, the environmental topic areas of air quality and greenhouse gases, energy hazards and hazardous materials. Hydrology and water quality, noise and solid and hazardous waste were determined to be significantly, potentially significant. And so therefore we went into more depth to analyze the impacts. In addition, we uh included analysis on four alternatives, including the no project alternative. Next slide please. So overall, um, we do expect long-term air quality and greenhouse gas benefits from implementation of the twenty-twenty-two AQMP. Primarily from NOx and GHG emission reductions. However, on the path to get there. We do expect potential significant and unavoidable impacts uh in the areas as listed. For example, in air quality from construction as well as um for term GHG from producing electricity. Uh, energy uh from electricity, natural gas and hydrogen demand. Um, hazards and hazardous materials, impacts from ammonia use in controls, as well as potential fire hazards from coating reformulation. Uh, and you know, jumping ahead, noise impacts from construction, uh existing road rates, uh existing roadways to install new infrastructure. Um, as well as solid and hazardous waste impacts relating to landfill capacity. Now, we identified mitigation measures were feasible, but out of an abundance of caution, we did uh conclude that significant impacts would remain. Next slide please. So the draft program EIR has been released for forty-six day public review ending on November first. And if you would like to access the document, um it's available at the link listed on this uh slide as well as uh via hard copy. If you would like to go to South Coast AQMD headquarters request. Next slide please. So we do want to encourage the public to review and comment on the draft program EIR. And I will be the one compiling all the feedback we received. My contact information is listed here. And please do note that all comments will be responded to in the final program EIR. Uh, next slide. And so uh. I was just one of several SEQA team members who did review and prepare, help prepare the uh draft program EIR. Um, the contact information for uh. Those above me is listed on this slide as well. All right, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you so much Kevin. Uh, appreciate that uh overview of uh the SEQA analysis. Uh, and so then moving to our final presentation of the night before we open it up for public comment. Uh, this will be on the socioeconomic uh analysis uh that's been conducted of the draft socioeconomic analysis. And so. Uh, we have Elaine here to talk through that. So go ahead Elaine.
All right, thank you Ian. Good evening again, everybody. My name is Elaine Shan, planning and rules manager overseeing the preparation. Of our socioeconomic report for twenty-twenty-two AQMP. Next slide please. And so we have been conducting the socioeconomic impact assessment for AQMP for the past three decades. So every time when we have an AQMP, we also analyze the associated socioeconomic impacts. And I do want to mention that this is not actually legally required for us to conduct this analysis unlike for our rules. But we still do this in order to better inform the members of our public and also our policymakers. Namely, our South Coast AQMD governing board members. And so in our socioeconomic report, we provide a short and sweet executive summary. Uh, for everybody to be able to find the major uh key findings um in a few pages. But then in the in each ensuing chapters, we take a deeper dive into a variety of different topics. And at the end, we also provide technical appendices for all the analysis that have been conducted in this report. For those audience who would like to get more technical details. Uh, next slide please. So we release our socioeconomic report for revised draft twenty-twenty-two AQMP on October first. And in this report, we analyzed the benefits, costs, economic and also environmental justice impacts. Of our proposed revised draft twenty-twenty-two AQMP. And it is, the report is now open for public comments and the comment period. Will be open until November second. So we encourage everybody. Who have comments, questions, suggestions to please um provide your comments to us by the date. And the reports, the appendices and also the public comment submission form, they are available on this website here. Um, uh specify on this slide. And if you click into the slide, you will see that. Uh, you will see the section that is that is shown on this rectangle box. And so if you click into each of those links, you will be able to access the different documents and comment submission form. Next slide please. And we continue to have our stakeholder involvement via our. Public processes. And so since November last year up until this month, we have conducted. Uh, four different scientific, technical and modeling peer review advisory groups. That where we discuss our socioeconomic related topics. And we also had three scoping sessions in May through our regional public workshops. And including today, this is our second regional public hearing. And we have three more to go uh for the rest of October. To provide you with more information. And last Friday, our October seventh, we also had the presentation to our South Coast AQMD governing board. On the topic of socioeconomic impact assessment. Next slide please. So from this slide on and also in the next few slides, I will talk about the high-level summary of different topics of our draft socioeconomic report. And so in terms of incremental costs, we estimated that uh to implement the revised draft two thousand twenty-two AQMP control measures. Um, there would be an associated incremental cost totaling about two point eighty-five billion dollars every year. And close to fifty-seven percent of this total. Will be associated to mobile source control measures with the remaining of about forty-three percent. They would be attributable to stationary source and also area source control measures. And about ten percent of this annual total, they are um associated with incentive-based uh control measures. Next slide please. And so on this slide, I want to provide you with the more detailed breakdown about our uh incremental costs and also the associated NOx uh emission reductions. So on the left-hand side, you can see that about fifty percent of that total annual cost. They are associated with the uh mobile source control measures that would be implemented by CARB. And so for another about twenty-seven percent of this cost, they're associated with those very important federal actions. That are part of this plan that Sangmi and also Sylvia were discussing about. And on the right-hand side, you will see that like uh consistent with their presentation. We do expect about seventy-five percent of emission reductions that would be associated with both. Car mobile source measures and also the federal actions. And you could see that for the uh stationary source and also area source control measures. They are relatively uh more costly than um the the rest of the control measures. In terms of the NOx reductions that can be achieved through these measures. And this is mainly because a lot of these emission sources, especially uh for the industrial commercial combustion sources. I many of them are already tightly controlled, but since we are pursuing all feasible measures. We would be looking at uh deploying zero emission technologies for these high energy demand sources. And currently like this, the the cost for this kind of uh control technologies. That will be zero emissions that are generally at a higher cost uh than the traditional combustion-based technologies. Uh, next slide please. In terms of the draft health benefits compared to the two point eighty-five billion per year of uh incremental cost. Uh, we estimated about close to twenty billion dollar per year of annual average monetized public health benefits. And about seventy-five percent of those benefits, they are associated with reduced long-term exposure to PM two point five. Or fine particulate matter. And with the majority of the rest of the benefits associated with uh. Uh, avoided premature deaths um that come from the reduced exposure, long-term exposure to ozone pollution. Uh, next slide please. And on this slide, I wanted to talk, uh, take a deeper dive into the pre- uh avoided premature deaths. That I just discussed on the previous slide. And so you could see on this slide here on the left-hand side, you could see kind of a special distribution. About the avoided premature deaths that we're projecting for our um South Coast air AQMD region. And then in terms of ozone, reduced ozone exposure, but also in terms of the reduced PM two point five exposure. And on the right-hand side, the table shows the projected numbers of premature deaths. So you could see that by year two thousand thirty-seven, uh, we're projecting about three thousand premature deaths that would be avoided as a result of implementing. Uh, our revised draft twenty-twenty-two AQMP. And so you could see that the special distributions are a little bit different um across the whole region. And the key factors driving this difference in spatial distribution. That was associated with how we project the air quality uh changes will be distributed. But also related to the size of the population in different regions and also where the susceptible. And also the vulnerable populations are located or will be located in the future. Uh, next slide please. And because uh the health benefits might look different uh from uh our sub-region to different sub-region. We also want to make sure that like the health effects are um accrued uh. Hmm, uh, equ- equitably across the EJ communities and also non-EJ communities. And in order to define EJ communities, we look at a few different definitions for EJ communities. And so at the bottom for definition three, you could see that while utilizing a Sinne Bell five three five disadvantaged communities or DAC definition. But for definition number one and number two, while also giving a little bit more, looking at different definitions that would be giving a little bit more weight. To air quality associated indicators. And as you could see on this table, it doesn't matter which definition we use to define EJ communities. We do see that, oh, we do project that there will be more health effects, health benefits uh that. The EJ communities can expect than uh from the non-EJ communities. Uh, next slide please. And in terms of the projected job impacts, we look at the potential job impacts associated with both incremental costs. That you can see on the blue bars, but also associated with health benefits that you can see on the green bars. And so when we put the effects together, the net effects are depicted by those purple dashlines that you can see also on this chart here. So overall, we do project that an annual average of about seventeen thousand jobs that could be foregone. But then uh in terms of the, but this is in the economy with over ten million jobs in total. So relatively. It is, it is a big number, but relatively it is still a very small percentage. And in terms of the annualized job growth, we do see that there could be a uh slowdown of job growth. But overall, the projected job growth, um after AQMP is implemented, we we still see that the job growth is still on a positive trajectory. Uh, next slide please. In terms of next steps for our AQMP socioeconomic report. So as I mentioned earlier, we released that on October first. Um, and so currently we're conducting our regional public hearings. And again, our public comment period uh has already started and it's going to end on November second. So again, we encourage everybody to send me your comments and suggestions by that time. And in mid-November, we will be releasing our draft final socioeconomic report. Where we would take into account all your comments, comments and suggestions. And include um a section where we will provide our responses to all of your comments. And on December second, twenty-twenty-two, the whole AQMP package, including our socioeconomic report. Will be brought to our governing board for the public hearing. Next slide please. And here you can find our staff contacts. So if you have any questions or comments for our draft socioeconomic report. Please feel free to reach out to Brian Vlasic um um on my staff and also in our socioeconomic analysis team. Or you can reach out to myself directly. And if you have any questions regarding AQMP or any general inquiries. Please reach out to Dr. Sami Lee or Ian McMillan. And uh at the bottom of this slide, you you can also see that there's this uh website that's being listed here. Where you can find also the economic report and again, the public comment summit uh submission form. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to us via email as well. That would be socioecon at AQMB.gov. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much Elaine. Uh, so now we have gotten through all of the presentations uh that we had scheduled for tonight. Really appreciate everyone's patience getting through that. It's uh some. Uh, dense material uh that we're trying to cover at a high level and and hit all the key points. Uh, we definitely encourage everyone to uh go ahead and read the plan, read the supporting documentation. It's just a few hundred pages of light reading, uh but it is, there's a lot of really good detailed information in there. Um, and uh, really encourage folks to to dive in on this. Uh, we do now want to open it up to uh public comment. This is uh one of the most important components of uh any uh air quality management plan. Uh, is to hear uh public feedback uh that has helped shape the plan uh to date so far, but we are still. Uh, very interested to hear um uh any feedback that folks might have here. So I'm going to open it up now. We'll do um. Uh, we'll just kind of open it up here. And I see we have one public comments hand raised so far. So Marko Bromawicz, do you want to go first?
Hi Ian, uh, thank you very much. Uh, because it's a public hearing and we're limited to time. I decided I've divided my comments up between the various public hearings and this afternoon I talked about. Um, the uh cost-effectiveness guidelines. My comments are continuing from them. This uh, the district does have a great, high-quality staff. There was much innovation in this plan, but the plan does fall short. And so. My criticisms and concerns are mainly due to bad policy decision, staff uh. Decisions, staff worked hard under difficult conditions. Um, I want to focus today on public participation, which um Sang Li, I think. Uh, was the one that pointed out that it was critical. Um, and at a previous public workshop, I said that this plan process was had the best ever public involvement. But I must revisit and revise that assessment based upon what I've seen since. And I've got a couple of comments for the district and. And I've got a couple of comments for the district and one for CARB. One is, I was a little bit surprised when it was indicated that on the ways to comment on it and the comment responses are all about written comments. So the public, which mainly gives verbal comments, basically has been ignored when it comes to actual responses. And because I prefer to do verbal comments, I feel like my time has been wasted in part. Yes, many public comments are repeats that are addressed through other written comments, but many aren't. Now I submitted some written comments, not as detailed as articulated, articulate as they should have been, relying on the district's duty to respond to all comments. So that's one concern. Secondly, with respect to the health analysis, my other concern about the public involvement is respect to the the timing of the advisory council meeting, which is mandatory and comments were being held until the socioeconomic study was done. But the district, holding it on the day that you did hold it, the most important solemn holiday for Jews around the world, you took away the ability for inclusion and commenting to your advisory council or the ability for the public or or making a choice by people to have the ability to practice their religion. Diversity, equity and inclusion of the public seems to have declined at the district since the hiring of a DEI officer. This adds to the uproar of holding and not even recording the board retreat last time on a similar date. As you've recently seen at the LA City Council, equity is important and that you include all is important. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much for sharing that, Mark. I really do appreciate you sharing those comments with us. We're definitely going to take that back. So thank you for that. I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next hand raised. I see Robbie Gross, your hand is raised. Do you have a comment?
Yes, hello. Thank you very much. Yes, my name is Robert Gross. I'm a consultant speaking on behalf of Ontario International Airport. In the revised draft AQMP, it indicates with the EGM zero two measure that the general conformity set aside budgets will be eliminated and rulemaking will be initiated to develop a process to accommodate projects using mechanisms other than the current set aside account. We believe that the AQMD should reconsider this approach as a set aside budget is actually an important tool to facilitate that process. States in appendix four of the AQMP, it indicates that the set aside budget is useful tool to streamline the conformity evaluation process because it builds an available balance for emissions of NOX and VOCs within the state implementation plan that can be used by projects that exceed the minimum threshold applicable in the general conformity evaluation process. The ability to efficiently demonstrate general conformity is actually a critical component for an airport and other facilities' ability to have projects that will support the economic health of the region to occur. So this approach has been used effectively by AQMD to have important projects improved in the past. The set aside budget establishes a clear and quantifiable means of achieving general conformity in the applicable year. The draft twenty twenty two AQMP proposes two other mechanisms for projects that needs to demonstrate general conformity being the voluntary emission reduction agreement, VERA and emission reduction credits essentially. Both mechanisms are based on emissions offsets and both will likely encounter issues that could inhibit projects through timing delays. Offsets can also be difficult to quantify and are often associated with the project itself and the timeline of implementation may not align with the project timelines. So the timeline which AQMD additionally, the timeline that with AQMD can establish guidelines and rules for regulations to govern the VERA process. Also clouds windsup approaches would be available. Furthermore, given the current uncertainty on what these costs may be with VERA and ERC, it would be prudent for AQMD to maintain an effective tool for potential use in the future, such as the set aside accounts that does not create significant economic hurdles for projects that are formed for the region and projects that may help reduce overall emissions. AQMD might want to maintain the multiple tools to address real conformity in order to ensure that some key projects for economic health of the region can still occur. It was also noted in the review of the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Emissions Reductions Credit System, CARB actually found significant issues with VERA and ERC, including issues with the timing on projects, discrepancies with calculation methods and a lack of transparency, making reduction calculations difficult to review.
Okay, I see Robbie, your time is up. It sounds like there's a lot of detailed comments that you have here. We encourage you and I think this goes for the same speaker, Mark. If there are more detailed comments that people want to discuss with us, please, let's find some time to meet and to be able to go through them because sometimes it's difficult in this forum to get through all of the details. So definitely encourage, reach out and let's let's keep working through the the issues that you're raising. I do want to open this up now to see are there other speakers or anybody else who would like to comment or have any any feedback at this point. I'm going to go ahead and just pause here for a little bit. And just thinking for anybody else who would want to comment here, we do, we do take these verbal comments into consideration as we go through the air quality management plan and all of the other documentation as well. So we don't have necessarily the the same formal write-up, but the those comments are taken into consideration and reflected in the AQMP itself. And then so we definitely do encourage verbal comments or written comments as well. Either one is is good. Okay. So not seeing any other hands raised, just give this a little bit more. Again, people can press the raise hand button at the bottom or star nine if you're on the phone. And don't see any other hands being raised. So I think with this, we may go ahead and conclude the meeting. We do have some additional public hearings coming up. So if you think of something else and you want to comment, you can certainly attend one of those other meetings or, you know, again, provide that written feedback to us. So with that, I think we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting and I thank staff and everybody who contributed to this and CARB as well. So appreciate all your efforts and we'll go ahead and adjourn for tonight.